Councillors, I'd like to acknowledge the new councillor for Walter Taylor, councillor James Mackay, here in the front row. During the dinner break, councillor Mackay made his declaration of office with the CEO and is now officially the councillor for Walter Taylor Ward. Congratulations to you. We will now continue with the order of business. Any further speakers? Councillor Timmy.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on item F, the naming of Quirk Street, or the change of name, sorry, of Quirk Street Park to Fish Creek Park. Chair, the Quirk Street Park was one of the early streets that was carved out of the settlement land out in the gap, and as such, a number of the homes there were sort of built organically along the creek. One of those homes became part of the buyback scheme underneath the flat buyback scheme with council. As a result, a park was created in Quirk Street. This park is surrounded on two sides by Fish Creek that runs along the edge, and also Quirk Street and an adjoining neighbour. The park itself is on three lots and it's quite picturesque. It's very low in the street and adjoins the bridge. Fish Creek always has water flowing and, as I've mentioned in chambers before, the creek itself is fed by a spring further up past Hilda Road. The creek runs past, Fish Creek runs past Hilda Road State School, which has long contributed to the riparian zone along that area. Fish Creek 4061 is a subcommittee of the PNC and have dedicated countless hours in and out of the creek, increasing biodiversity and teaching kids about our natural environment. Fish Creek 4061 won a number of state awards and grants over the past couple of years since I have entered this place. I've had the privilege to work with the 4061 community and the local community to enhance our natural environment and also to share their successes in and out of the creek. So what better way to recognise their contribution to our natural environment and our community than by naming a park after this wonderful group of people who love their creek so much? Chair, I want to thank Oli Naby and Susan Werges. These two ladies are the founding members of Fish Creek 4061 and are also hardworking members of the community. I want to thank them for their contribution to keeping Brisbane clean and green. I also want to thank Hilda Road State School and in particular Principal Jodie Watts for ongoing support of the Fish Creek 4061 community. I also want to thank the community for supporting the renaming of this parkland and also the council offices for their assistance in the name change and the group of individuals who generally care about their environment. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Hammond wrote a reply? None. All right, I will put that item, all those in favour of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report being received, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, the Field Services Committee decisions please.
Thank you Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2019, on matters usually considered by the Field Services Committee, be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2019 on matters usually considered by the Field Services Committee be noted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Chair. Just, Chair, there's a number of petitions that went through during recess and they're all set out in the papers for today's meeting, so I will leave it to the chamber for debate.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. All right. Councillor Maddick, Lifestyle and Community Services decisions please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2019, on matters usually considered by the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee, be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Maddick, seconded by councillor Mackenzie, that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2019 on matters usually considered by the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee be noted. Councillor Maddick.
Thank you Mr Chair. Before I get to the actual petitions, there's two items I wanted to speak on within our portfolio. Firstly, as I mentioned earlier in my question, the Indigenous Art Trail. I certainly encourage all councillors to actively promote this important piece of work done by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people within our community in order to be able to give the profile to what is wonderful pieces of artwork across our city. The Indigenous Art Trail is an ongoing programme, but we've taken it to the next level this year in regards to the number of pieces, but also the types of displays that we're undertaking. So not only is it static pieces of art at key lanes across the city, but it also illuminated photographs. There's wonderful pieces by a Torres Strait Islander woman undertaking weaving work that she has worn and photographs of that have been taken and then illuminated across the city. We've also gone into more electronic and so projected works across, for example, on Edward Street, on the corner of Edward and Elizabeth, I think, projected on one of the walls above the Hermes Building is a piece, a digital piece of moving art that has been undertaken. This is the kind of innovative work that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people are undertaking and it's something as a community that we need to encourage because it's not only the artwork itself, but the stories behind it that are absolutely fundamental. A lot of these pieces reflect the history of the First Nations people within these areas and I think as, not only as a community but as a council, it's important that we acknowledge and respect, but also promote those stories. As a council, we do a wonderful job of promoting cultures of all nations across the world and equally so, we must do our part to promote the culture and the stories of the First Nations people. Also, Mr Chairman, I was very fortunate to be at the launch with councillor Vicky Howard. And sorry, I should note also that councillor Howard did the opening of the Indigenous Art Festival and I thank her very much for taking the time to do that and promoting as much as she has. We also attended together the formal launch of the Brisbane Street Art Festival and that's something that again, I encourage everyone to be involved in. It's a two-week event, there are 60 pieces of art across the city on both public and private property and street art is something that we must also as a council, not only embrace but encourage. The work that I saw was sensational. I want to thank councillor Shree for his attendance at the launch at West Village on the night before. It was a local launch at West End. We both saw extraordinary pieces of work within the West Village facility. I want to thank them for participating and being a supporter and sponsor of the event. But particularly Lincoln Savage and his whole team that put the Brisbane Street Art Festival together. They are an amazing, passionate group of people and there are so many great artists out there. One of the things that came out of it was not only recognising art, but also the conversation around it and how we can try and find more spaces within our city that artists can do their work in a coordinated and valued way to be able to express their emotions and their passions, but also the history of our city. So it's wonderful work, it's our fourth year of being able to support it and I certainly encourage everyone to be a part of it. Turning to the petitions, Mr Chair, there are three before us. The first one being requesting the council postpone the synthetic surface project at Toralva Park, Evident Park. The second being an objection to footpath dining in character residential areas. And the third being a petition requesting the council recognise the Vietnamese community's heritage flag. In regards to the first petition, this was done by a group of petitioners from Toralva Park who had some concerns around the implementation of a synthetic surface. The issues that they raised have been addressed by officers within the response. Can I say to the chamber that the vast majority of participants and supporters of the facility, sports club out there, are very much in support of this synthetic surface. It will go a long way towards reducing the cost of maintenance and also expand their opportunities for playing in various codes throughout the year. In regards to the second one, the footpath dining is more of a, in principle, concern around the city, but we have within our planning processes the necessary assessments, not only within CAS but in DA, to address the issues of local residents around that of noise and other related issues. And I know from a CAS perspective that officers are quite diligent in their work around assessing these applications and the impacts it has on the local community, setting the necessary conditions and also limiting, in many instances, the number of tables and chairs that permit applicants are requiring of their business in order to find that balance between residents and the business itself. And thirdly, the petition requesting the council recognise the Vietnamese community's heritage flag. The important thing to note in this petition is not that this was in some way to sort of restrict the flying of the flag, which is done quite regularly. And as the Lord Mayor said himself, he was at an event where the traditional flag was flown and we encouraged that. This was more a petition requiring that we recognise it more formally. And so within the petition response, we have referred to what was also being done by the state government because the petition was not only provided to us, it was provided to the state. And you can see in the petition response that it was not a position that the state government was prepared to formally recognise their flag. And so in accordance with the following of state government, it was appropriate that council also follow that position. But as I said, as a council ourselves, it is not about flying the flag. We've always supported the Vietnamese community and they have always freely flown the flag. It is more that formal recognition that they were seeking, which state government was not in a position to support.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to speak on the petition that Brisbane City Council recognised the Vietnamese community heritage flag. It's quite an important issue for me, of course, because I represent a very large Vietnamese community and in all conscientiousness that my support of not supporting this recommendation, my caucus has allowed me to actually have a conscience vote on this matter and I propose to, or I ask that it be voted on seriatum. Mr Chair, Mr Chairman, the large Vietnamese community that I represent identify in large part with the yellow flag with the three horizontal red stripes, the flag of South Vietnam. I believe the recognition of the heritage flag would help enshrine and honour those Vietnamese people who fled in the 70s and 80s when their home was invaded by a communist regime, which caused millions of Vietnamese to flee for their lives and the lives of their families. This flag is also sometimes called the Freedom Flag for a very good reason. The petition requests that Brisbane City Council acknowledge the flag officially. This symbolic gesture is long overdue and it makes sense when you understand that it is displayed and flown at all Vietnamese events, not just here in Brisbane, but right throughout Australia. Forty-five years after Australia and Brisbane welcomed the Vietnamese refugees, I think it's about time we officially acknowledge and recognise the heritage flag like other Australian and overseas cities have done. The beloved yellow flag is an emotional and intricate part of the Vietnamese people. It stands for democracy and freedom, a flag that they died for. And I brought along just a, it's an expression of how much they love their Vietnamese flag, heritage flag. Not long after I became a councillor, Dr Quam Buie presented this tie to me, which I happily and honourably wear at every event that I am asked to in the Vietnamese community and also of course their lapel pins as well, which everyone wears. And I'll note that of course the Lord Mayor was at the morning service recently at Freedom Place in Athala and you can just see how proud they are of their flag, their heritage flag. There was probably at least 20 or 30 of the flags there on display that afternoon. The Vietnamese people were stripped of their assets, citizenships and their entire way of life. And as a council and on behalf of the community we represent, surely we should have compassion and understanding to give them recognition of their historical flag. Mr Chair, voting for the recommendation will do nothing to help the Vietnamese community deal with the wounds of war, plus give them the comfort in knowing that they came from, where they came, sorry, and where they came from and how they suffered. They should not be forgotten. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Maddick.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Only in response to councillor Strunk, and I understand his position as the local councillor and I can only refer to the response that we have before us and the council does and has and continues to acknowledge the strong feeling that members of the Vietnamese community have for the coveang and that as a council, we have always supported the flying of their flag at various community events. And ultimately, Mr Chair, I mean, as the response has stated, that the Queensland Government itself in its own petition response recently advised that it was unable to support the request for the coveang to be formally recognised, which is what the petition was seeking. But equally so, within our response, we've advised, should the Queensland Government alter its advice, then councillors are prepared to review its position. Failing that, as a council and as councillors, we will continue to support the Vietnamese community. They are a vital part of our community. They've made an enormous contribution to our city and have made it great. And as all councillors, we would always stand behind them in regards to their community contribution and to their events and to the flying of the coveang at community events. Thank you.
In regards to items A and B, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. In regards to item C, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Vision?
The vision.
Vision called by councillor Cumming and councillor Strunk, ayes to my right, noyes to my left. Please ring the bell. Attendants, please close the bars. Plagues, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 16 in favour, six against and one absence.
Councillors, please return to your chairs. Councillors, are there any petitions? All right, councillor Cook.
Thank you, I have a petition here to stop a unit development at 388 Hawthorn Road, Hawthorn.
Councillor Maddick.
Mr Chair, I have two petitions. The first one being on behalf of residents in regards to Ethicapool and the second is a petition I'm submitting on behalf of councillor Hammond in regards to the naming of a park or reserve as Terry Hampson Reserve.
Councillor Richards.
Chair, I have a petition on behalf of councillor McLaughlin for the Hamilton Ward. It's requesting council to investigate a zoning change for the residential properties on Turner Street, Grafton Street, Boynton Street, Blackmore Street and Hadfield Street in Windsor.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition about Bracken Ridge, Rebel Bear Pony Club.
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have a petition of 1,100 plus people calling for better bus services in Yoronga and I also have a petition of graceful residents, about 450, calling for a zebra crossing and build outs outside Graceville Rail Station.
Councillor Allen, may I have a motion for the receipt of the petitions, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? There being none. Is there any general business? Councillor Mackenzie.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Today is the day that I resign from council. This is my ovale victory speech. I've been here 11 years and it's been a wonderful experience. And I'd just like to say that I've been incredibly humbled and honoured to have represented the residents of Holland Park and Cooperu wards over these last 11 years. My path to becoming a councillor was afforded to me primarily through the members and supporters of the Liberal National Party and the previous Liberal Party of Queensland, of which, as an 18-year-old, incredibly, I've been a member for over 50 years. Can't believe it. Becoming a councillor seemed a perfect opportunity for me to repay the many advantages our society has bestowed upon me and my family. However, success in life requires luck and circumstance. These factors, coupled with the drive and support from those around me, were indispensable to this success. For this support, I will be forever grateful. I want to acknowledge the personal and practical support of my lovely wife Josie, who was my tireless all-seeing campaign manager. My daughters Alison and Christine, my sister Beth, and my now deceased parents, Muriel and John Mackenzie, and other family members, close friends and valued party members, who were continually encouraging and supportive. Being an elective councillor carries a very visible public responsibility. To our residents, local issues tend to be deceptively clear and understandable as one drives down the street, uses public transport or enters a public park. When councillors are accountable to the city and their local constituents, both areas must be addressed rationally but with genuine empathy for the emotional attachment residents have to their homes, streets, suburbs. Residents mirror this attachment to us as local councillors when we are faced with the inevitably difficult process of change. I've always endeavoured to do to the best of my ability to balance these two areas. My efforts and those of this administration have been judged in the three successful elections this administration has fought. However, that success would not have been possible without our first innovative LMP Lord Mayor, Campbell Newman and a clear, sited and professional leadership of our recently retired Lord Mayor Graham Quirk. I also recognise the hard work of Lisa Newman and Anne Quirk as the lady mayoresses occupying the responsible position as Chair of the Lord Mayor Charitable Trust. I first met Graham Quirk in Young Liberals and I now reflect on the superhuman effort that he served this city for over 33 years, that he leaves behind a world-class city with modern and exciting, which is modern, exciting and progressive, with a future everyone can approach with confidence. I also worked with Lord Mayor Adrian Schwinner for many years at party level prior to our elective roles and the Deputy Mayor, councillor Adams. Both reflect a strong-worth ethic and are very competent. I believe we will see the city continue to flourish as the most livable city in Australia. The work of committee chairs, councillors and members and council staff is part to allocate scarce financial resources to the most effective use. I've seen this at close quarters, serving as deputy chairman on finance, transport and lifestyle committees and as committee members of field services, environment and infrastructure committees. Committees and councils' budget decisions at a ward level show an investment of millions of dollars in community resources through our individual Brisbane wards. Much of this spending results from requests from residents who have contacted local ward offices. The frontline in any ward office is the ward staff. To Bev Morrisby, my ward advisor, and Joe Kennedy, my ward assistant, I say a huge thank you. Bev, as my office manager, has been with me for over 10 years and I can say that her attention to detail and organisation of the office is incomparable. Joe, as a vital part of the office procedures, has taken on the myriad tasks that fall to a busy office with competence and good humour. No councillor could ask for greater professional support and a more pleasant company in making the most challenging days manageable. Councillors continually face requests for more and more funding than is available. This means that allocations must be made and commencement's time for projects must be managed. Nevertheless, in addition to individual requests, our offices has assisted many local sporting community and ethnic organisations. For example, these include developing facilities in the Cooperoo Park, Whitesill Reserve, Leicester Street Park and Handlon Park, the National Servicemen's Association, the Woodturners Society, which is a men's shed for women as well, at Greenslopes and have also been recipients. Upgrading shopping centres at Camp Hill, Stones Corner, Martha Street and Cooperoo Junction has assisted small businesses and provided increased services for residents. Capital expenditure on sporting venues at the Cooperoo Netball Association, Annalee Soccer Club and the cricket and football clubs at Whitesill Reserve have benefited from substantial council funding. Significant infrastructures such as continual road resurfacing, the establishment or installation of traffic lights at Leicester Street, Chatchworth Road at Whitesill Reserve and Goings Street Cooperoo have noticeably increased the safety for all south side commuters. The southern suburbs are now a much better place than they were 11 years ago. Of course, all these activities are undertaken by council staff. I'm keen to make special mention of these officers and the first-class job they perform either in the field or in administration. There are far too many offices for me to name, but I hold them all in great respect for their collective professional expertise and dedication to getting the job done for the residents of Brisbane. Brisbane is an inclusive city and being a part of many ethnic and community groups living in Cooperoo Ward has been enlightening and a satisfying experience for me. The diverse ethnic groups that meet at the Fiji Senior Multicultural Hub, which is a council building at Barnsall Place at Annalee, is an excellent example of this. I've always been privileged to support these men, women and children who have taken their bold decision to leave their homeland and build a life in a foreign but welcoming country. In conclusion, I leave with a note of encouragement to all councillors and especially to those on the government benches. The work you perform as a member of this administration each day is, in the true sense, an essential service. No other group in our society has the legal capacity to discharge this function. You are charged with a careful allocation of public resources and the management and maintenance of those resources. You are charged with the careful allocation of public resources and the management and maintenance of those resources, the answering of every one of your constituents' questions on a daily basis. To all councillors, the benefits your constituents receive is the reward you receive in seeing that this city develop and grow into a vigorous, healthy and progressive city. Lord Mayor, my colleagues, councillors, council staff, continue good work, your good work and wish you every success in the future.
Well done councillor Mackenzie, is, are there any further speakers of general business? Councillor Cumming.
Thanks very much, I'd like to congratulate councillor Mackenzie on his career in the council. Fifty years' membership of the Liberal Party is a great, great effort. I've only been a member of the Labor Party for only forty years and it shows you, you truly believe in what you've done and that's, that's great. And I remember calling, speaking to an ALP member who used to work with you on election day and he said, he reckoned that you were retired when you were approached by the LNP to run for council. You didn't need the money, you certainly didn't need the headaches and the long hours, but you took on the job and you've done very well. I've always found Ian a thoroughly decent human being and I congratulate him on his career and wish he and his wife a long and happy retirement.
Further speakers, Lord Mayor.
I want to add my congratulations and thanks councillor Mackenzie for your eleven years of service here in this chamber to the people of Brisbane and also for your fifty years of service and support to the Liberal Party. Fifty years, as we've heard, is an incredible, it's, it's an incredible political contribution. And just thinking about how the country, the city, the state has changed in that fifty years has been, it has been a remarkable feat. I think, I think I clocked up twenty-one years of service in the Liberal Party this year, but so fifty years is truly incredible. I, I remember distinctly, it was election night on, the election in March two thousand and four and we were both candidates in that election and we were both unsuccessful in that election. And I couldn't afford to have my own after-party, so I just tagged along to Ian's after-party. So we, we went to Ian's house for the after-party and it wasn't really a party because we both lost. But we were both so delighted to see Campbell Newman elected as Lord Mayor on, on that night. And it was truly the start of a, a new era in this city. And as I've mentioned previously, and we've heard it tonight, Campbell's enthusiasm and his agenda motivated many people to get involved in this team and I know Ian shares that with me. I will say Ian listed a number of the projects and initiatives that he's delivered in his area. First as the councillor for Holland Park and then subsequently as the councillor for Cooperu Ward. And there has been so many achievements in the local area, so many things that he's delivered for his local community. And I know he will be remembered fondly for those things that he's been involved with. But for me personally, one of the things that I'm struggling to remember is whether Ian has ever had a fight with anyone. I just don't remember, I, I don't remember it. This is a, this is a pretty robust place. I, I just don't, don't remember Ian not getting on with anyone. And that, in, 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 you know, this profession that we're in is truly a remarkable thing. You are a calm, reasonable, positive person. And I remember, you know, there's occasionally times that, that I've had where we've been going through something very tough. We've been getting slammed on something or other and Ian is always positive about it, no matter what's happening. And he just puts it into perspective with his comments, he's always been encouraging and supporting no matter what we've been going through. So I want to wish you all the best for the future. I, I know that you will stay in the local area, I know that you will continue to follow local government and council politics with interest. And don't be afraid to give us a call as well, to give us some advice when you see anything that you want to impart your experience on. But I simply, on behalf of all of us on this side, want to wish you all the best for the future and thank you for that incredible service that you've given to this council, to the people of Brisbane and to the Liberal Party and LNP.
Further speakers? councillor Wyndham.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'll be very brief. In this particular job, the public look at us in two ways. There's politicians and there's statesmen. The politicians look to the next election. The statesman looks to the future. Thanks, Ian.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Look, I'd just rise to speak on the proposed redistribution that was announced by the state government over the weekend and the comments by the new Lord Mayor in the current mail today. I was a little bit concerned by his comments in the paper today. Clearly, we have a situation where at least two wards and possibly three are above or under quota by the statutory amount that is triggering a redistribution. One of those is the Ward of the Gabba, which is significantly over, I think it's about thirty-two and a half thousand voters in the Gabba Ward and there are twenty-six thousand in Chandler Ward, so it's specifically well under quota. What concerned me today was the Lord Mayor's comments that somehow this is unfair, that there is going to be a redistribution. I, 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 I found those comments to be quite improper, I think, because it's really not appropriate that one ward is so far over quota that it puts an unfair burden on one councillor to manage a huge constituency compared to the councillor who has particularly represented the underquota ward for a very long time. In my view, that's not a good look and I would just urge the Lord Mayor to think about his role as Lord Mayor now, that he has to look to the fairness of how the city is governed right across the city to make sure our democratic processes are fair, are transparent and that no councillor is having additional burden placed on them. Now, we all know that redistributions can be tricky. You can come out a winner, you can come out a loser, you know, anything can happen in a redistribution. But to simply come out and, you know, invoke the sort of Joe gerrymander, this is about stitching up, stitching up the LNP, I think was just completely inappropriate. There is a statutory process here that has been triggered, we have to go through it. The LNP obviously has to put in a submission or will put in a submission. And I presume Labor will, I will be, councillor Shree will be. I just hope it's not like last time where, I think, what, the Greens wanted to push me over the bridge into Walter Taylor, which I thought was a bit silly given that they just pushed me back this way. The LNP wanted to combine my ward with councillor Griffiths' ward, which I thought was very funny. And Labor Party also, I think, wanted to push me over the bridge into Walter Taylor Ward as well. So none of that happened, which was really good. They kind of did, I don't know whether they took up my suggestion, but I suggested the swing to the south and the east, which is the one they took up. I don't know what is going to happen with the redistribution, but I firmly believe that the Lord Mayor of the city should be setting the example and not claiming the process is rigged when it is a statutory process, when we have to go through this process to ensure that all councillors fairly represent as close as possible an equal number of voters across the city. So I just urge the Lord Mayor as this process unfolds to temper his comments, to make sure that the politics of the elections don't overwhelm the statutory process that has to unfold.
Further general business, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. I rise tonight to acknowledge the councillor for the Cooperu Ward, Mr Ian Mackenzie, and his contribution to this city. Firstly, when I was a new councillor who came into this place three years ago in March twenty sixteen, it was Ian's gentleman support, guidance and wisdom of how this place works from a council's perspective was so supportive and humbling. I want to acknowledge your dedication to the city of Brisbane, your strong work ethics and the interest in your local community. Your empathy and understanding of the pressures on parents with family and work responsibilities has stood you in good stead with your community. Your constituents, sorry, on behalf of your constituents and as a parent with school-aged children, your genuine desire to connect, to understand and to listen is a value that is so honourable. May I salute you with heartfelt thanks for your years of service to this great city and to the people in your area. I wish you, Josie and your family, all the best in your future endeavours. All the best, Ian, and thank you for being you.
Further general business? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of matters. One is in regards to a project that commenced about three or four months ago and, and secondly, I thank you to Ian, councillor Ian Mackenzie. The first is a, a project that, that I initiated, or I suppose it really started late last year when I had a bit of a stash with the then-chair, chair councillor, sorry councillor David McLaughlin in regards to how we, how we look after our barbecues in our parks. And he, he was, he was, he was calling on residents to make sure that they clean it before they move off and go off home. I, as I say, I had a bit of a stash with him in regards to that because I thought council could probably do a better job in possibly protecting those barbecue plates themselves. And so a project sort of kicked off on the Cathfany Show. First time I'd actually ever done a radio interview when it was in the studio and I was very apprehensive, but Cat sort of calmed me down and, and got, and got the information out, got the information out, which is what I was there for. So I, I, I said that I would like to undertake a project that would be a positive one and that was to maybe design a better Brisbane Barbie. And she, she liked the idea and we, during the radio interview, she suggested a few, a few things that maybe should be considered in regards to this. And one of them was a cultural, something that would actually resonate with those people of culture within my very large cultural community of more than seventy, seventy, seventy different cultures. And I thought that was a terrific idea. And councillor McLaughlin graciously said that if, if something was designed that came up to a national standard then he would, he would seriously have a look at that. So how, how, how that then rolled out was with, we, we contacted Queenston University and QUT looking for the industrial design area of those, of those universities and sadly, Q, University of Queenston doesn't have one. So QUT was the, was the one that we contacted and Marionella, who's the senior lecturer with the design students in QUT, we undertook negotiations with her in regards to trying to see if they would be interested in undertaking this as a, as a programme for this year, for the first semester this year. And she then agreed to that because she thought it was something that those industrial design students would love to sort of undertake. And they do this in other areas and other industries that, that actually contact them. So what, it came, that, that's how that came about. We, we brought them out to the ward to, because we wanted to look at that cultural, that, that culturalness of, of a potential new barbecue that could be used in the parks because a number of the cultures actually don't use the barbecue because it doesn't actually suit their types, type of cooking. So we wanted to have a look at that. So we brought them out, we, and we brought them out for a barbecue and at the Parklands Precinct, the Lake Parklands Precinct and we had a number of people from the various cultures there to, to, to actually communicate with them and give them the information that they needed to, to look at, at a, something that could be culturally significant for them. Anyway, so that happened and then we had, then they went off and started to design. The first feedback session took place and each of the students, so there were seven teams in the end and each of those teams had three to four students in each of the teams and they had to come up with four different designs, each student, four different designs. So you can imagine how many designs on that feedback session, on that first feedback session that we were looking at. And, but it was just quite amazing what these, what these young students have come up with. The second feedback session, which was just recently, we then narrowed it down to two, two designs from each team, right? And, but in that two to three weeks between the first and the, and the second feedback session, the, the improvement was just spectacular. And now at the end of May, we'll, we'll actually have the final judging, which will come down to two, one, one design per team. And then we'll have that adjudication. And then we'll have the adjudication and then the final winner will be then on display at the Anala Art Gallery, right, for a couple of weeks, along with, along with posters from the other, the other six designs. It's been a real pleasure to sort of work with the QUT and the students. It's been, I think, something that could, could something significant come of this. We will be contacting the various manufacturers of, of the barbecues as we have with Christie's, Jason from Christie's, who has, who has supported the, the request from the student teams, right, on any technical aspect that they should actually have a look at when it comes to manufacturing a barbecue. So, and they're just at Wakehall, which is really convenient. So anyways, I just wanted to let the chamber know that the, the project is underway. I think we'll come out with a barbecue that potentially could be marketable, I hope, but we'll see. But some of the ideas are just unbelievably fantastic. Finally, I just want to-
councillor Strunk, can I just get you to hold that idea? Councillors, as the time is nearing nine PM, the meeting will automatically stand adjourned unless we agree to continue your sitting. Is it the will of this council that the, that the sitting of council proceed past nine PM? All those in favour say aye? To the contrary, no? Councillor Strunk, please continue.
Finally, I'd just like to say a few words about councillor Mackenzie. I've, I've sat in the committee with him for, for a number of years and he's, I think someone said, said it already tonight, he's a thorough gentleman. He doesn't pay, he doesn't play the partisan politics all that often. I can't actually remember if he ever did in committee. But, and maybe he didn't and that's a credit to him. He obviously is a good local councillor, looks after his ward and, and as I say, doesn't necessarily plays that partisan politics. Again, I don't know more than that, but I, I can sum up people pretty well. I, I did it in retail for about thirty years before I came into government. And I can usually some people, you know, some people, some people up pretty well. And, and I always just thought he was a, someone that I'd like to get to know outside of this, outside of this, outside of politics, I suppose. I think if I'd have known him, if I'd have known him prior to politics, I'm sure we'd still be friends. So, thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Adams, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'd just speak briefly too to say congratulations and best of luck to councillor Mackenzie, who has been my bordering councillor for the last eleven years. And I can say from firsthand as somebody who in the last three years has taken over a large part of what used to be the Holland Park Ward that he looked after, that was looked after absolutely beautifully. He has been a good friend over those eleven years, we spent many times at many functions together and I will miss him and his wife Josie at those functions that we used to attend together as well and I wish them all the best. And I wish them all the best and I hope they are very, very busy, uh, spending the kids' inheritance for years to come.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, and before I go any further, I'd also like to offer a sincere and hearty congratulations to councillor McKenzie on his retirement. I wish you the very best in the next stage of your life, it's well-earned retirement. I rise to speak briefly on, uh, council transparency and meeting processes here in this chamber and to say hello to all the people who might be currently watching online or who might watch this video later on. This is the first meeting in Brisbane history that's actually been livestreamed and recorded. So, welcome to the chamber. For, for the benefit, for the benefit of all the people who've never had a look inside this chamber before, I thought I'd take you on a really quick tour and also explain a little bit about what's going on here. So if you're watching, uh, at home, the top left screen, the guy in the big chair in the middle of the chamber between the flags, that's councillor Wise, he's the chair of the, the meeting. So he is a Liberal councillor, he's part of the Liberal Party, but he's supposed to be in an independent role up there, facilitating the meeting, making sure everyone sticks to time and, and keeping track of who's, uh, who, who's meant to be speaking and where we are in the agenda. Sitting to his right are three council staff, they're also helping keep track of the agenda, keeping track of, um, people's time and where we're up to in terms of the various council votes. Um, behind me here are the five Labour councillors, so I won't name them all, but there's only five of them. Um, to my right here is councillor Johnston, she's the independent councillor for the Tennyson Ward. She used to be in the Liberal Party, but we won't hold that against her. Um, just over here to my immediate left is councillor Toomey, he's also a Liberal councillor. There are so many of them at the moment that he's over this side. Um, in the bottom, in the bottom right screen, uh, um, that, those are all also Liberal councillors. And in the middle, you'll see there's six, um, that, six people sitting there. That's the, the mayor, the deputy mayor in the front and then another four, um, senior members of the L N P. So essentially there's seven, uh, there's, there's the Lord Mayor and- Oh, sorry, I should, I should have mentioned, there's a few other council support staff floating around the back, including Billy, who does a lovely job of keeping us all alive in this chamber. Um, so for those who are kind of new to what council is and how it works, it's important to understand that those people sitting in the middle of the coun, in the middle of the chamber, so it's the, your top right scre, screen, they're essentially the power holders in Brisbane. So they make a lot of the big decisions that shape our city behind closed doors. They're the chairs of the various committees, so there's a chair of public transport.
Councillor Shree, we're pretty good, but can you please, um, if, if you're making a video for, for social media purposes, can you please take out pejorative statements about?
Sure, I'm, I'm-
Please keep it up.
Um, yeah, for sure, I'm, I don't think I've said anything pejorative, but I'm just explaining to people how council works and I'm happy to be corrected if anyone else wants to debate anything I'm saying. I'm, I, I welcome the discussion, but essentially those, those people in the top right screen are chairs of various council committees. You've got the Chair of Infrastructure, Chair of Public Transport, Chair of Field Services, et cetera, et cetera. Now, they also meet privately and, um, they refer to themselves as the E and C Committee, the Establishment and Coordination Committee. And that's the committee that actually makes a lot of the big strategic and policy decisions that shape our city. So this, this full meeting of all the councils here is in many respects more of a well-scripted political theatre piece than an actual meeting where people make decisions and debate.
See, again councillor Shree, theatre piece, it's an important democratic forum. So, can, you know, we're, 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 I'm allowing a lot of leaning in, so please.
So what, what, what you will have just observed if you're watching the livestream is that, um, some members of the chamber feel a bit uncomfortable about the fact that we're acknowledging that this meeting is really more of a rubber stamping body than a meaningful decision-making po, body. If any of the opposition councillors in this chamber were to move a motion about any issue of importance to their local residents, it would almost certainly be voted down because the L N P councillors in this chamber always vote as a block. So there's only been a few instances in, I think probably less than half a dozen in the last three years that I've been a councillor, where a motion that hasn't been moved by the L N P has actually succeeded. And obviously one of those motions was the motion to allow live streaming of council meetings in this chamber. So we got that one through, we've got a few other good ones over the years. But generally speaking, the administration, so the Liberal Party, will not allow or tolerate any meaningful debate or support motions.
Councillor Shree, I, I, okay, um, you've taken, we've been very lenient. You've taken some pretty big, there's some pretty big statements there that are not objectively true. Um, this, this, why don't you and I have discussion later and you can do an infomercial for your Facebook later, all right? But that, this is not an opportunity, um, for you to, um, make, you know, play to the audience. We have, we can, we can help you do what you're saying, but again, you're making a lot of statements that are not true. Um, and I've allowed a lot of what I'll call breaking of the rules for you to allow to make that, that, that statement, this, this video, so please.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order against you councillor Shree.
Yes, I appreciate that you're very-
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, I appreciate that you're very new in this role, but can you please tell me which rule of procedure that councillor Shree has, um, contravened? Because just because you don't agree with what he's saying, um, does not give you the authority to tell him he can't say it. So could you please tell us which rule of procedure?
You've asked your question, thank you. Um, councillor Shree's meant to make all statements through the chair when he was addressing the camera directly. All right, further speakers?
I haven't finished.
I, I believe you've sat down.
No, I sat down because he was speaking.
All right.
Um, it's general business, I'm, I've got, I've got three and a half minutes left. I'm perfectly entitled to make this statement. Through you, Mr Chair, through you, Mr Chair, to the people of Brisbane, I want residents of Brisbane to understand what goes on in this chamber and to recognise that this chamber is largely a rubber stamping body for decisions which are made behind closed doors.
I don't think that a majority of people in this room accept that and I don't think a majority of Brisbane residents accept that. Just because it's your feelings doesn't make it true.
This is-
Yeah, point of order again, um, Mr Chairman, I'm sorry.
Councillor Johnson.
But, thank you. Um, the fact that you think it's the vibe in this place does not mean that councillor Shree is convening, uh, contravening any rule of procedure. And, uh, if you're going to admonish him for breaching a rule of procedure, um, you should be clear about what that is, not your personal dislike of what he is saying.
Thank you, councillor Shree.
Through you, Mr Chair, to the people of Brisbane and all the councils in this chamber. I'm not breaking any rules by making these statements. This is general business and I'm entitled to speak about the way these meetings are run and the decisions that are made in this place. And I've said repeatedly and I'm happy to say it again, that the, the decis, the big decisions that shape our city are not actually made here on the floor of this chamber. They are made by the chairs of the various committees in, in private meetings and they are made by the E and C Committee behind closed doors. If you disagree with that, then we can have a meaningful debate about that. But simply because you take a different view of the matter doesn't mean that you should feel free to silence me or censor me or prevent me from having this discussion. I think what residents really need to understand is that e, even the backbench of L N P councillors, the councillors who are not chairs of various committees, have com, comparatively little power within their own party to shape the strategy and policy direction of the council administration.
Point of order against you councillor Shree, councillor Adams.
Councillor Shree is imputing motive and continually is reflecting adversely on councillors on this side of the chamber and I ask that he stops with this commentary to the cameras and comes back to reasonable debate that he complains we don't have in this chamber.
I agree, councillor Shree, please, um, please be respectful of this place at which you're elected councillor.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and I'm, I'm reflecting on my experiences as a councillor in this place and on the processes we use to make decisions. As we've noted many times in this chamber, if opposition councillors bring motions to this place, even when they are we, well-thought-out and reasonable, they are voted down unceremoniously by the majority of the L N P councillors. I'm yet to see a single L N P councillor cross the floor or vote against party lines with the exception perhaps of the same-sex marriage vote. Yeah, councillor Johnston's raising her hand, she's no longer in the, in the party for that very reason, I believe. But I think for, for residents who are watching at home and seeking to understand what's going on here, I really want to emphasise that while getting cameras into this chamber is valuable and a positive step forward in terms of transparency and accountability, it doesn't really show us all, everything that's going on in this council because so many decisions are being made out of sight. The E and C meeting, committee, so the Establishment and Coordinating Committee, comprising the various chairs I mentioned before and the Lord Mayor, meets in secret. Journalists aren't allowed to cover those meetings. Opposition, Greens, Labour, Independent Councillors are not able to attend those meetings. And, and tho, and the minutes of those meetings are not made publicly available. We only get a short report stating in general terms what was discussed. So those big decisions need to be, we, we essentially need more transparency around how those decisions are made and recognise that right now what's happening here is really just a, a charade or political theatre.
Lord Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman, I'd like to speak on two issues. Uh, the first is the, um, current, uh, redistribution of ward boundaries. And the second is, uh, the comments that have just been made by councillor Shree. Uh, I'll start with the, um, last thing first. Um, councillor Shree probably didn't do a lot of research before putting his hand up for this council because this council has a government and an opposition. If you're in the opposition, you don't get to be part of the government. This is a pretty basic fundamental democratic principle. If you want a collective arrangement where everyone supposedly makes decisions independently, go down to Logan or Ipswich, see how that works out. Because even where they have independent councils, they form groups of people that make decisions. Um, so this system that we have here has served the people of Brisbane better than any other local government in Australia. It is, it is the most professional and the most capable local government. I'm not talking, um, simply about the councillors, I'm talking about the whole organisation and the way the structure of, of Brisbane City Council works. It is the benchmark for local government in Australia and rightly so. But a big part of that is the democratic competition between, uh, government and opposition. And that is the same principle that operates at the federal and state levels. I don't see anyone saying that we should change the federal and state, uh, system of government op, and opposition. I don't see anyone saying, oh, that system needs to change. The reality is part of-
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Shree.
Will councillor Shree now take a question?
Lord Mayor, will you take a question?
Uh, no. It is part of the Western democratic principle that operates not only here, uh, but in the UK and so many other countries around the world. This idea that there is a government and an opposition and people get to choose. People get to choose someone to make decisions. And if you're in the opposition, you're not, you're not part of the government. So yes, your job is to be involved in the democratic debate. Your job is to hold the government to account, absolutely that is your job. But it is not your job to be part of the government and make government decisions. Um, so that is a fundamental misunderstanding of how this place works and how this place has been since nineteen twenty-five. Um, so, uh, the, the claims that have been made tonight are, are just a clear misunderstanding of this process. But because we are able to form a government and make decisions as a team, uh, we have been able to deliver incredible infrastructure projects, incredible lifestyle improvements in the city uh, because we have used that democratic process to set an agenda out to the people of Brisbane as a team. Not as a group of individuals all wanting to go off in their own directions or with their own pet projects and agendas, but as a team we have set that agenda. And just like the opposition, uh, going into the election will have their own agenda as a team. Um, that has been, I believe, good for democracy in this city and good for the way the city has developed and been able to roll out infrastructure projects and improvements to our lifestyle and green space. Uh, and I think that it is an appropriate way to create that democratic, healthy democratic competition and tension there. Um, so that, that is, and it's not something, like I said, that is unique to Brisbane. It operates at the federal government, the state government and in democratic Western countries around the world. In relation to the, uh, Electoral Commission and the redistribution of electoral boundaries, I simply want to point out a few facts. I, I certainly don't want to argue with councillor Johnston, but I just want to point out a few facts which are really relevant. Uh, we only just had a redistribution at the last election. And traditionally, there has been a redistribution every two elections. And so we saw, uh, redistributions in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and seven, and then two thousand and fifteen in the lead up to the last election. So going on those historical trends, we would not expect a redistribution to occur at this time. And there is also discretion as well at the ministerial level, Minister Sterling Hinchcliffe, to decide whether a redistribution is in the public interest. And I really wonder how and where and when that discretion may have been used. I'd be interested to know, um, what role the minister has played in this because, uh, when you take into account the fact that out of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand enrolled voters, um, the number of affected voters in terms of the wards that are out of quota is eight hundred and ninety-six people out of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. So this is the fraction out that we are talking about here. Now, under the local government, uh, under the, um, City of Brisbane Act, we're required to, uh, report to the Electoral Commission, um, in the September, in September last year, about the status of the different wards and whether they're in quota or out of quota. And, um, we did that and we reported on the eleventh of September last year. Months and months go by and there's no, there's no response from the Electoral Commission. And it wasn't until the first of April that we finally got a response. April Fool's Day, April Fool's Day, we got a response from the Electoral Commission. Um, and they said they were going ahead with the redistribution. But interestingly, if you compare the exact same period before the last election, this process is running five months late than the last redistribution was. Five months late. So someone's been sitting on this for five months and not taking action. If indeed there was to be a redistribution, you know, this is, this is a matter for the state government, the Electoral Commission and the minister, why have they sat on it for five months? Why did it only come out on the first of April? These are legitimate questions to ask. And what this means now is that the whole process has been so delayed that we're unlikely to get an outcome until October this year. Now, we know that there's an election in March next year. And we also know that in order to meet that October timeframe, that the period for consultation has had to be reduced significantly compared to previous redistributions. So these are all legitimate questions that I'm asking. I'm wondering what is going on here, uh, why there's been a five-month delay and, uh, what role the minister played in making decisions? Did the Electoral Commission seek the minister's advice on this? And what advice did the minister provide? And how can he justify, if he did provide advice, that this is somehow in the public interest to have a late redistribution at the last minute, the eleventh hour before a local government election like this, when we had one last time? So, you know, the, the, these are all legitimate questions to be asked and I won't apologise for asking those questions. I'd like, really like to know what is going on here. Now, the Electoral Commission, I believe, is an unbiased organisation. I don't believe that the government is unbiased and so there's an important distinction there. And in the end, the government and the minister have a core when it comes to these matters. So I am not making any claims about the Electoral Commission or bias in the Electoral Commission. Uh, I don't believe that to be the case. But I would really like to know what the role of the government and the minister has been in this and why we've had a five-month delay.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and I'd like to also speak on the, um, proposed local government boundary review, um. And it was interesting, actually, before I was cut off, I wa, I was going to touch on this very point, which is that right now we have twenty-six councillors in Brisbane, um, each of whom represents somewhere between twenty-seven and thirty-three, thirty-four, twenty-six and thirty-four thousand voters. Um, above and beyond that, those councillors also represent people who are under eighteen and might not be eligible to vote, um, uh, permanent residents, migrant workers, international students, a number of other demographics that are, that aren't eligible to vote, but which still take up the time and energy of a councillor and still require service from, from this councillor, which is fair enough. My point here though is that in some wards, such as my own, there are very, very high proportions of non-citizens or, or non-voters. We have a lot of international students in my ward, a lot of my- We have a lot of international students in my ward, a lot of migrant workers who might not be enrolled to vote. But who still need service and who still um require investment and and policy support from this council administration. So I, as a councillor, am, am currently representing some, somewhere in the realm of fifty thousand people. Fifty thousand for one councillor, that's quite, that's quite a large um ratio for a supposedly local representative. But even with the smallest wards, even the the wards that might only have um around twenty, twenty-five to thirty thousand um voters or residents. That's still a really um, really large ratio for for representation, it compares very poorly with other neighbouring councils. Where even, even the sunny coast, I think, has a ratio of one councillor to about twenty-two thousand voters. Now, what, what, what that means is that as our population continues to grow. Residents will have to wait longer and longer for responses from their ward officers and um for meeting. Meetings that they request with their councillor. Because it's not humanly possible for one councillor to have meaningful conversations. With tens of thousands of residents every year. Now, we all work very, very hard, all of the, all of us in this chamber spend a lot of time and energy. Reaching out to and talking to as many constituents as possible, keeping them informed through a range of channels. But there's a structural problem there, where even the most hard-working, most effective councillor. Still is only able to reach a proportion, uh and a limited proportion of their electorate. Most people in Brisbane don't even know the names of their local councillors. And I think, I think that should tell us something, I, I, I stand by that comment, some people might reject it, but. You, you do a survey, well, no, if you do a survey, not everyone's gonna reply, are they? They're only gonna, only the people who are actually engaged are gonna reply. But my point here is that we really do need to review the boundaries of, of the current wards. By um, by the time of the next council election in twenty twenty-four, the GAB award is predicted by the E C Q. To have uh forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight enrolled voters. Forty, that's close to forty-one thousand enrolled voters by twenty twenty-four. So if we don't redraw our boundaries now, the problem is gonna get a lot worse in four years' time. In comparison, other wards around Brisbane are not predicted to grow at the same rate. So, the neighbouring ward of Mawne Side, for example, currently has around thirty-two thousand or thirty-one thousand two hundred voters. And by twenty twenty-four, we'll have thirty-two thousand five hundred voters, according to E C Q predictions. So other wards are no, are growing nowhere near as fast as the GAB award. And that, that really makes it incredibly important that we do start this boundary review sooner rather than later. But we actually need to go a step further and and create new ward wards and create new councillor positions. So that we can improve that proportional relationship. I think we should actually be looking at creating at, at least five new wards and creating five new councillor positions. So that all residents of Brisbane can get a better quality of service. That would reduce the size of wards, it would reduce the population of residents who are represented by individual councillors. And would mean a better quality of service for those local residents. At some point, we're gonna have to create new wards, because Brisbane's population is growing very, very fast. The, it's simply a matter of when we do it, either we do it before this election or we do it before twenty twenty-four. But if we wait that long, we're gonna, we're still gonna have this same issue to deal with, and it's actually gonna be more complicated by that point. Because the wards are gonna be even further out of proportion. So we need to be creating new wards now and redrawing boundaries now. In order to ensure that the quality of service delivered is is as high as possible to the residents of Brisbane, regardless of what party their councillor belongs to.
Further speakers, councillor.
Um, thanks very much, Mister Chair, and I just rise to speak uh about a local event that happened on Saturday. Um, which was the official opening of the new Dara B M X park, Mawne Road Park. Um, it was an absolutely fantastic day, not just Saturday, but Sunday and Monday as well. Um, this has been a long-awaited piece of infrastructure for the residents of the southwestern suburbs. It complements this administration's delivery of a similar facility up on Telegraph Road in councillor Cooper's ward. And of course, delivers on our commitment to build two of these world-class B M X facilities in the city of Brisbane. B M X is a growing sport, Mister Chair, as many in the chamber would know, it's been in the Olympics since Beijing in two thousand and eight. Uh, and it is only, I think, in the, proof was in the uh number of people who were there on Saturday. Uh, at seven thirty in the morning, riding on the track, uh who were there at seven thirty that night, riding on the track. And who were there at all hours of the day and night for the next two days, uh Mister Chair. Uh, taking advantage of this fantastic new facility. Uh, on Sunday, um there was probably close to five hundred people uh across the space at the um Dara Mawne Road Park. Um, I don't think there's been that many people in that particular space since it was a dump back in the nineteen nineties. Uh, at one time, uh no one used to use this underutilised parcel of land on Mawne Road, Mister Chair, um. And uh the uh work that's been done by the council officers to cap uh and deal with the landfill issues on that site. Uh, and then the work that's been done by the fantastic offices in the lifestyle part of council and C P O. Uh, to build this facility is amazing, uh I was blown away, councillor, um. Councillor Mackenzie spoke of uh those projects that we deliver where you can stand back and just go. Wow, that is something fantastic for the community, uh and that is one of, this is one of those projects. Um, it is a truly phenomenal facility to see kids uh as small as three or four. Riding their B M Xs uh with every age group represented up to. People who are more advancing years than myself going around the track as well, uh and a track that's designed for all abilities. Uh, and all skill levels uh as well. Uh, it has, as I said, been a team effort, there's a number of people, uh all of the council officers who have put in the work. One of the complaints on the day was, it was too noisy. There was too many kids, having too much fun, creating too much noise, um and that is, I think, a good thing. Um, because those kids being outdoors, being active, being healthy, away from screens. Making friends, learning skills, uh and participating in our local community is a good thing, and I think. Uh, that is something that we as all councillors, councillors should strive for, uh day in, day out in this place. Uh, it is, as I said, uh a fantastic facility, and as I said uh through the speech, I just want to thank and commend all of the council officers. Uh, who have been on this journey, I do note, it was May the fourth that we opened it on, uh and the fourth was with us. Uh, we'd had uh Princess Leia turn up, um we had many other people in Star Wars shirts celebrating International Star Wars Day. Uh, and it was a great way to uh mark that event with the official opening of the new Dara B M X track.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor, I declare them enclosed.